Okay, we're last.
Good evening and welcome to the Spaulding Board of Commissioners Extraordinary session. It is Monday, February 20, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I would request that you please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner James Dutton from District 2 to deliver the invocation, and Commissioner, excuse me, thank you, Commissioner Ryan Bolden from District 4 to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Please join me in prayer. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Father, we humbly come before you tonight as public servants and as members of this community to ask a special blessing on this community. Father, we are so grateful for all that you've done for this community. Father, for the lives that were spared during this disaster that we're still recovering from. Father, we just thank you so much for all the wonderful people that you've put in place, from our police chiefs, sheriffs, our fire chiefs, our emergency responders. Father, you can see from on high the effort that we have gone to, to be worthy of those blessings. Father, please help us to remain worthy of those blessings, that this community can stay under thy protection and be guided by thy hand. Bless us with harmony and with that spirit to guide us. And all these things, we humbly ask, in the name of our Lord and Savior, even Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, please, you all men pledged our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add an item number three to old business, to lift from the table the discussion over the conveyance of property to the housing authority.
All right, I have a motion to amend the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion is carried.
Where did you want it?
Item number three under old business, because we'll have to lift it.
All right. At this time, item number four, presentation of, oh, excuse me. I have to do the acceptance agenda. Item number four, presentation of financial statements. Consider approval of financial statement ending January 31, 2023. Ms. Garrison.
I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board?
I don't, Mr. Chairman. I would like, if not there aren't, I'd like to make a motion to accept Ms. Garrison's financial report for the period ending January 31, 2023.
All right, I have a motion to have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Thank you. Item number five, presentation of proclamation. Miller Edwards from Malden Jenkins LLC is present to review the June 30, 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Welcome back again, sir.
Good evening. I'm gonna just do like she did, see if you got any questions.
Not quite so easy, sir. You're not getting up that easy.
No, I appreciate y'all having me here this evening. You know, let me just open by saying, I think you all have come so far. You know, I think about, as he gave the invocation earlier, talking about how much is going on and the challenges that are out there. You all have been in challenges, it seems like, from my standpoint, for over a decade. But it's nice to see you all have the year that you just had with fiscal year '22 coming to a close. Across the board, you actually had some nice things happen. Your fund balances increased, you got some more liquidity, you got some more cash. It certainly helped to receive the ARPA money that you all have in a separate fund, and that's about 13 million sitting there waiting. But you know, you take everything you can get, and hopefully we'll spend it wisely and do what needs to be done with it. But just looking at the big picture of things, when you look at the county as a whole, the primary government, and I'm not including the Board of Health, I'm not even including the Water Authority, what I'm about to say, but when you look at everything within the primary government, and you roll it all up as one activity, you had a pretty good year, again. You had about 168 million in assets, not all that's cash, probably of that, about 66 million of that is cash, though. That includes that 13 million from ARPA that's in that number. You had liabilities of about 67 million. About 17 million of that is what I would call short-term, things like accounts payable, crude salaries. payable, crude salaries and wages and things like that that add up. And about fifty million of that is long-term, okay? That, what's, what does that mean then? That means that we've got a good, strong amount of assets with only a, a, a small claim against it currently. You'll still have to fund these long-term liabilities over time, but you're in a good, liquid position right now countywide, when you look at it from that standpoint. You've got equity of about a hundred million dollars. So again, pretty nice-looking balance sheet. Looking at further into that balance sheet, one thing that I bring to y'all's attention every year, we talk about your pension plan, and we talk about, you know, what's called the net pension liability, the, the unfunded amount. Currently, you all are about seventy-six and a half percent funded. It's a little lower than I'd love to see it. I mean, I like it being up in the more lower to mid-eighties, but it's still not in a bad place. I've got a lot of governments out there that are in a lot worse position with theirs being like fifty percent, sixty percent funded. So you're in a good spot. It's just one of these things that, as I've said to you all before, if you ever have a hankering for believing that we have too much money, put some of it over in the pension plan and put some of it also on the unfunded other post-employment benefits plan. You all have benefits there, like a lot of governments do, that when someone retires from the county, you cover them with certain levels of health insurance for a period of time until they're eligible otherwise, and you have nothing in that bucket right now. You're on a pay-as-you-go basis. That is not unusual. I'd say ninety-nine percent of all governments are in that situation. But I think it's going to be prudent for all governments, including Spalding County, that over time, we need to start thinking about how we might could start funding a little bit of that, so that we don't, aren't pushing that to a future generation for funding, that we're going to try to fund it today. And so again, as you look at your situation, I said you've had a good year, you've built up some funds, you've built up some liquidity, et cetera. If anyone ever thinks that, well, that's just too much, put it over some other places where you really need it, and that'd be your pension plan and your other post-employment benefits plan. So that's just something to think about there. Again, looking at the entity as a whole, you all took in about seventy-three million dollars worth of revenues, and you spent about sixty-two million. You had a bottom line of about eleven million dollars across all funds. Now, let me make this real clear. That's not just the general fund, that's the SPOLOs funds, your Fire District Fund, all these different funds, you roll them all up. Across the board, they had a good, good thing. Part of that's because you didn't spend as much out of your SPOLOs funds as what's available. You're collecting it, and your plan is to spend that money, but right now, we didn't spend as much as we took in this past year in some of those activities, and that's fine. That's the way SPOLOs is supposed to work. But again, I think everything looks really good. You all should feel so much better today than maybe the way you felt ten years ago in the year two thousand and twelve, when we were just coming out of all the recession issues. This is a different-looking place. I remember saying to you all years ago that you only had like two weeks' worth of fund balance. That's not the case now. You've got just short of three months' worth of fund balance in the general fund. That's a good thing. And again, I just salute you for making that happen. I think that starts at the top and trickles down through management to the bottom. Another thing I think's worth noting is when you look at your budget actual of your general fund, that's not an easy thing to figure out. What, what do we need to budget for revenues? What do we need to budget for expenditures? Your budget for revenues was only different by about eighty thousand dollars from the actual, okay? That says to me, y'all did a pretty good job of keeping a pulse of what needs to be done. You amended your budget as you needed to, but you got down to where we budgeted here almost exactly what we took in. That's a good thing. Now, on the expense side, you got another good thing, but it's a little bit unique in that you spent seven and a half million less than what you had budgeted in the general fund. So, you know, you just gotta look at that and say, okay, what's the next year? What are we going to really do this upcoming year? But nonetheless, I think, I'd rather be on the, on that end of a variance of spending less than spending more than what you'd budgeted. That could be a problem. So again, I think both of those are healthy trends, to say the least. Looking at, you know, all your other funds that I mentioned, you know, I've mentioned just casually in aggregate, SPOLOs funds, Fire District, those are doing well. You have about nineteen million of revenues that came in across all those funds, and you spent about nineteen million across all those funds for a zero change. The change that you had, though, was about eleven million, because you also issued ten million dollars worth of bonds this past year. And with that bond, you got about a million-dollar premium on those bonds, so you actually took in eleven million dollars' worth of indebtedness proceeds that run through the income statement at this level, and that gave you a bottom line across those funds of eleven million dollars. So it's like a three-million-dollar bottom line at the general fund, and then like an eleven-million-dollar bottom line at all other funds, primarily because of the bonds that we issued. So again, that's worth knowing. Your water fund, I mentioned that early, I'll bring it up now, your water fund seems to be operating the way it should be. Let me explain what I'm, when I say that. You all took in about ten and a half million dollars worth of revenues, and you only spent, expensed about seven and a half million for a bottom line of three million. Well, somebody might say, well, that sounds crazy. Why would we take in all that money when we didn't need it? Well, guess what? You needed it, because you also spent about three million dollars on paying your principal on your debt and on your infrastructure enhancements. You spent about three million dollars between those two. So you have to make money in that proprietary environment in order to be able to pay your debts and to invest in yourself. Those investments in yourself are not expensed, they're capitalized. So to me, it operated perfectly like it's supposed to. It basically broke even on the cash flows, and that's a good thing. You did not spend and receive as much in federal money as you have in the past. Historically, most years, you've had what we call a single audit, where we have to do special compliance testing of, of some of your grant programs. But this year, you only recognized something less than seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which is the threshold, and because of that, we didn't have to do such compliance tests this year. Now, as you spend some of that money, like ARPA money, that thirteen million, when you start spending that, you'll have another single audit coming behind it. And who knows, maybe the other grant monies will also have to be looked at as well. But this past year, from a federal grant standpoint, we were very lean, and we had no separate compliance audit for that. But last thing I'll mention, and this to me is always important, when you look at an audit, you want to know, is it a clean report or do we have problems? From a financial standpoint, all these numbers I've just spoken to you about, you have a clean audit report, what we call unmodified. We do believe that the act for this prepared and, and presented to you all, that big, thick document of numbers, we do believe it presents fairly what we have here at Spalding County. Another good thing to take note of, and I haven't always been able to say this to you all, is that we had no findings on the compliance side. When we look at your internal controls, how they're designed and how they're operating, and any kind of compliances that we believe of a general nature or significant to the county, we test for those kind of things, we have nothing to report to you of being a demerit. So I think that's a good thing as well. So again, I'm going to stop at this point and just see what kind of questions you all might have.
He answered mine. I had, I had several in email. He checked each of those boxes.
I'm kind of shocked, but I'm happy. Yes, I do have some questions, but I already know the answers to them. I mean, I think that that's a good finding, but we're, from where we're all sitting up here, we're, we're like wearing black, we're mourning. We're mourning over here, so, yeah. That's got nothing to do with you, but yeah, thanks.
Any other comments for Miller? I like the idea of you just coming like this and having this kind of report year after year.
Okay.
We'd like to have that.
You like that?
Yeah, that's, this is as good as it's just about been for us.
That is true. That is a very true statement.
Actually, I think we said something very similar to that last year, by the way.
But it's improved even upon last year, so that's a good thing.
So if we were to borrow any more money right now, you're saying our, our ratings right now would be just like the triple A that we got a couple of years ago?
We know triple A.
No, we had like.
That was a double A? Double A?
Yeah.
It was up there pretty high.
You know, when they look, when they award triple A, you think about in this state alone, the only triple As, and correct me if I missed something, but I know Forsyth County, Gwinnett County, Cobb County, those may be the only counties in the state that I know of. I mean, we've got some Henry Counties that are close to it.
Comparing it to where we were last year.
You definitely improved.
Okay.
You know, definitely. I mean, you know, I don't know what your bond rating people would say, but you know, one thing you have to think about when it comes to bond ratings, and a lot of people don't quite put this two and two together, is it's more than just you that they're looking at. They're looking at all the demographics and the economics of the general area. I mean, I'll, I'll pick on where I'm from, Macon, Georgia. If Macon Bibb County was just killing it and just, the government was just blowing everything away, we're still not going to get triple A down there, because the economic issues that we have in the general area. The Board of Education down there in Bibb County is a very strong Board of Education. Just if you looked at its numbers alone, you'd wonder why aren't they triple A? Because they're in Bibb County. And so you got to keep that in mind. So I share that with you in case anybody's ever questioning you about why don't we have a greater rating? Some things are out of your control. You can only do the best you can do, which is what you all are doing, but there's only so much you can do to make that rating change sometimes.
Thanks.
I wanted to ask one more question, and Jenna probably knows this. You said that this year, we're, we're funding at seventy-six percent of our liability. What were we last year? This is on the retirement.
I can give that to you, it's right here on this particular page.
How soon would it be?
A year ago, it was sixty-eight percent.
Okay.
So we have had improvement there, too.
Okay, well, we're working.
You know, looking over time, we've got like ten years with the data on here.
Seventy-six now?
It's seventy-six point five as of June thirty.
Eight points in one year.
That's good.
That's solid.
Well, you know, that has to do a lot with markets, you know, things that we really don't control, which are investing people or looking at things and.
Well, if you've gone up eight points in this market, that's pretty good.
I know that for me personally, my 401K plan, which is all I've got, I don't have a pension plan, it had me very excited in June. I thought I could retire tomorrow. Funny thing happened about three months, all of that went away.
Yeah.
You know, it's just one of those things you have to just kind of weigh it out there over time, but.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
We don't have to accept that.
I don't think so. Jenna, I'd like to say thank you to you.
Yes. Really, thank you, absolutely.
This is really outstanding work over the last ten years to get us to where we are. We truly appreciate it, and sometimes we don't say that enough, but thank you for what you're doing to get us where we are.
Thanks, Jenna.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six, citizen comments. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and the topic they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your remarks to the board and not to individual members or to the audience. Personal disagreements with individual members or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient, respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topic as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the members during the citizens' comment. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speakers will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule. Ms. Winder, do we have anybody to speak tonight?
Mr. Mike Kendall.
Mr. Kendall, if you'd please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Mike Kendall. My address is one-three-zero North Hill Street, Griffin, Georgia. How you doing this afternoon?
Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. I have a client of mine who owns a building over here at one-fourteen North Eighth Street, and right behind the county's building, the old post office building over there, and they suffered some, some storm damage to the roof, and the parapet wall blew over onto the roof up there in the front of the building. And we have to get up there and demo this building to take this wall down. And because of all of the electrical wires, utility wires and stuff, it's very difficult to try to get up there to it. We've had to build some scaffolds out there in the front to try to fix this wall. And my client wants to utilize this parking lot, this parking, this driveway between the back of the old post office and their building for one day, so that we can get on top of this building and take all of these bricks off of the building. So we only want to use it for like one day, like on Friday, and we're going to demo it over the weekend, and we're going to put a dumpster box over there and build a chute so we can get all these bricks off the top of the building, and then we're going to have it removed like on Monday. So we were requesting that the use of that driveway, which will deny access to people who use those parking spots behind this building for one day and possibly the morning, because we're going to do it this Friday, going to demo it over the weekend, and the city's going to come out there and pick up the box on Monday morning. And so those folks might not have access to those parking spaces back there behind that building for possibly a day and a half. And that was essentially all we were requesting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Appreciate it.
We don't get to, we don't get engaged, yeah. We got to follow the rules, too. Can we, can we talk about that?
Yeah, who do we need to direct him to? Because he's talking about wanting to do this on Friday, so.
Let's have, let's, can the county clerk kind of update us on where we are as far as she knows?
I contacted, I tried to find a place for our people to park out of the building. One, our people are not in the building. It's the Public Defender's Office, who is our state employees, they're not county employees. I called them, they advised that they do use that parking lot in back, but some of the other businesses in the area use it as well. And if we block that road off, we're not only blocking our people, we're blocking other people in the area. That parking lot is owned, and, and Mr. Kendall can tell you, they tried to contact the owner of the parking lot and was unable to. I tried to contact the people who own the parking lot that's beside the liquor store to see if we could move our people over there just for the day. That is owned by an, an LLC and is managed by a real estate attorney out of Miami.
The city sold that lot?
Yes. According to.
It's not Patel?
The records, it is owned by an, an LLC. I can go get the name for you, but it's owned by an LLC. And the LLC is managed by a real estate attorney in Miami, along with the lot that's behind that building, is owned by the same company. So he wasn't able to get rid, get in touch with them, and neither was I, so he has proposed that we, that they be able to park down at the chamber, which is fine. I have no problem with that, but it's not just our people, it's the other businesses in the area that also park back there. And how can we close the road?
Hold on, man. So.
Well, see, and I, I, I call Chad, you know, because he's been working with Chad. So I tried to coordinate with the city, and, and I asked Chad, I said, is there any way that, that the contractor could work on top and get all this stuff together? The city bring in the container at five o'clock on Friday, and let's just tell everybody. Put notes, I was willing to take notes and put them on people's windshields and say, you've got to be out of here by four-thirty on Friday afternoon, so that the container could come in. And then, you know, asked him if they could pick it up on Friday morning so people could get back to the, and he didn't respond, basically.
So you're, you're talking about that little parking lot that's enclosed, that just has the one-way in and out?
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's not owned by the county?
We own the, evidently, we own the right-of-way there, but we don't own the parking places in the back, no.
So if we were doing work at that building and we had to use that driveway, what would we do? We would just notify them that they were, we're working?
Yes.
I mean, this is, if, if this was anything else, I, I would be like, you know what? Let them fix it. But this is, as a result of the tornado. And even though it's not happening two weeks ago, it's still the same.
Exactly.
Thing. I mean, I just think we just need to put a note up and say, this lot is going to be closed for construction for two days, blah, blah, blah. They can find a parking space, and they do the thing and be over with.
But, but you've reached out already to the Public Defender and the Mental Health Veterans Court?
Yes.
And then mediation, was the three, the ADR.
I, I reached out to the Public Defender, and I tried to call the alternative court, and I, I didn't get through to them, but I can, I can try again. But when I didn't have a place to suggest that they move, because the chamber's parking lot is full every day at lunchtime with all of the people, you know, going to that restaurant.
But there's just a chain-link fence there, and then there's another parking lot. Like, on downtown and Main Street, we were counting that as public parking. Is that not public parking? Is that parking lot also owned by somebody? I thought the city owned.
Right, over by.
Behind Impact.
The flying lady?
Yeah. Janet Brass.
No, I think the city owns.
That was their parking lot.
No, the city owns, the city owns the parking lot on the north side of Slaton, not on the south side of Slaton, behind Impact. Those two parking lots are privately owned.
And see, if, if we tell the people to park there, they can have a code. And see, if, if we tell the people to park there, they can have a code.
But, but, may I say this, though? You know, the only thing that sort of bothered me about it, you guys park, close off this parking lot back here all the time for all kinds of stuff. Barbecue fest.
Well, the, the county owns this half of it and the city owns that half of it. I thought the city owned that other lot. They certainly have been counting it as public parking for.
Would you, would you want us to close this off here? Is that what you're wanting?
Big part?
Are you wanting us to close our parking lot? Is that what you're asking?
No, 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 no.
It's not our parking lot.
The county owns that building and the parking lot, am I right?
No.
The county doesn't own the parking lot?
No.
I thought it did.
Behind the old post office?
What's the address there?
I think it's one.
One-fourteen, I think.
I think it's one-thirty-something West Solomon Street.
That sounds right.
It's one-thirty-five.
We're okay with Mike continuing to talk. You know, when you offer one time.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Because it's a storm, storm relation, I think I can do it.
When I looked it up, it said the county owned that parking lot.
Well, when you called me, you said that a private entity owned the parking lot and you had not been able to get in touch with them.
No, 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 I'm, I'm talking about the parking lot immediately behind the building that we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
That property's owned by the county, am I right?
What was the address you gave Mike?
Is it one-thirty-nine West Solomon Street?
Uh, no.
It's one-twenty-nine West Solomon Street?
It's gotta be in the one-hundreds because it's right.
Yeah, it's, it's the old post office.
One-forty-one.
One-fifty-one?
One-forty-one.
One-forty-one West Solomon Street. Well, it's showing on the tax assistance website that the county owns that parking lot and the building, am I right?
We're lucky.
I don't find anything without the address.
One-forty-one?
Yeah, that's a four, that's that, that building.
Yeah, one-forty-one is that building.
But it doesn't show any additional property around it.
The county doesn't own that bill, that property?
Yeah, it look, I mean, according to this, it looks like we go up to the next building. And it also looks like we own the parking lot with eight or ten spaces.
That's what I saw.
If, if we don't currently have the paperwork that says we own it, we've certainly used that parking lot for more than twenty years and we should file a paperwork to become the owner. Because in a very open and notorious way, have we been acting like we were the owner for twenty years? So uh.
At least.
I mean, by the tax records, that is part of that parcel.
Okay.
The road behind and the parking lot all seem to be at one-forty-one West Solomon Street.
As, as long as the Public Defenders and ADR, like the people using that building and the Veterans Mental Health Court are notified that, hey, for the, for Friday, you can't park here or whatever, like.
I get that.
And they're, I mean, you know, the Public Defenders might be in some kind of heavy murder trial or something that, you know what I'm saying? And I don't want anything to, you know, make them have to think about something other than what they're doing. But it might also just be another Friday for them.
Yeah.
So they might go, oh yeah, you can't park here. And then.
Tax record says we, that we did.
That's fine.
So what do we need to do? I guess, I mean, if these are tax records that we own.
Put a sign up there and tell the people they need to find a parking spot for a minute.
I mean, worst case, they can park over here, like it's, there's.
All right. That's what you need to do.
I do. I mean, I, I'm more than happy to put up a notice and, and send out the emails. I just needed your instruction to do that.
Do we need to take a formal vote to allow a private company to use that for a day? Like, does that?
No, this isn't, this is the kind of thing that would be in, at, at normal, everyday management.
It's a consensus.
Okay.
Green light.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Mr. Kendall. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
I was shocked, like, we don't own that one.
Item number seven.
Very good.
Consider approval of the minutes for the Spalding County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on February sixth, twenty-twenty-three, and the Spalding County Board of Commissioners' special call meeting and work session on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to second, uh, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five-zero unanimously. Item number eight, consent agenda. Consider the second and final reading, an amendment to the Spalding Code, Spalding County Code of Ordinances to update the list of roadways, both on system and off system as provided by the Georgia Department of Transportation and approved by the Board of Commissioners at the extraordinary session on December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
I just want to put on the record two things. One, this has nothing whatsoever to do with uh, school zone speed cameras. And two, that we have no choice and no say in any of this and it's ludicrous that they would even ask us to approve it.
Thank you.
But we're doing it anyway.
But we're, we're, I, I, I don't know why we're voting. I don't know what we're voting on. It's something that we control.
Well, we're just incorporating it into our ordinance because our ordinance currently does not have these roads and these speed limits and whatever.
Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five-zero, thank you. Old business. Lift from the table and consider appointment to the Spalding County Board of Zoning Appeals to succeed Robert Rob Purfoy for a four-year term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven from District Two.
Motion to lift.
Anybody in the board?
Yeah.
Anybody in the book?
He is in the book.
Yeah. Motion to lift.
Mr. Purfoy is in the book.
All right.
Say I can't.
All right. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All right.
Motion to appoint Robert Purfoy. He's the next in the book.
You don't have to do a motion.
Oh, I appoint Robert Purfoy.
Okay.
Hold.
Item, uh, item number two. Lift from the table and consider the appointment of the Spalding County Ethics Review Panel.
Uh, motion to lift.
Say I can't.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five-zero. All right, it appears to me that Commissioner James Dutton has three names. Commissioner Rita Johnson has three names. Commissioner Ryan Bolden has three names. And Commissioner Clay Davis has three names. Commissioner Flowers Taylor, do you have three names at this time?
Yes, I do. Um, I would like to keep Mr. Lattimore and um, okay, Mr. Lattimore and who else was it? Centel Brown and?
I sent them to you so I wouldn't have to do it.
So Mr. Mr. Brown is being removed from, from my list. And I'm adding Ms. Miriam, M-I-R-I-A-M, Eberhart, E-B-E-R-H-A-R-T. And I'll send you her information.
Not for anything Centel did, but because he can't, because we're new to.
Yeah, because he's got so much stuff.
Yeah.
All right, is that?
We're moving.
Kathy, is that all through, everybody that you needed for?
Quinn needs one more.
Okay, let me tell you what my other person was. I know you sent it to me. Kathy, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Is it the same person that's currently on there or?
Yes.
All right, so we have all fifteen names, right?
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Item number ten. Oh, excuse me.
Number three.
We have a lift from the table.
Okay.
Oh, that's old business, right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to lift from the table. The agreement, uh, potential agreement with the Housing Authority regarding conveyance of property over at four-nineteen Jefferson Street.
All right, I have a lift, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a lift and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five-zero, all right.
So I, Mr. Chairman, I have, I and TJ, TJ and Joseph and I were supposed to meet with the Housing Authority. Joseph was going to meet in the absence of Steve. And this is regarding the property adjacent to the Rosenwall School that we agreed three years ago to allow the Housing Authority to apply for a grant to, to put housing there, um, workforce housing. And when we got, my concern is that once we make the conveyance, we have absolutely no architectural control or demands after that. And I shared that with Stephanie because, not that I feel like the city will do anything bad, but we have tried to create an ambiance in that area that we're rehabbing and we want to make sure that whatever housing comes there accentuates what we already have. So, so, um, and then the other thing is that the documentation that they had actually submitted and showed me and TJ, Stephanie had not had a chance to review it. So what I would like and I hope you guys would like is that Stephanie would be able to put in some covenants that give us some architectural demands where we have some say-so beyond just conveying the property.
And I did let the developer's representative know that that was the direction that we were going to be leaning, um, that, that you did not want to give up all architectural control as we would just with the option, the way that it is. And she said, okay. She is also sending me the documentation that she'd previously provided to Commissioner Flowers Taylor so that I can review it. There are a few variances that are being requested and a zoning change as well through the City of Griffin. So she has those applications to send to me. And also I told her that I thought it would be a good idea if, if she would come here to present at your March sixth meeting that, that this board might have questions for her, for her as well and would like to see what they're proposing. And she agreed to, to be on our March sixth agenda.
And any updates we can get would be helpful.
And, and I don't have any doubt that working with the Housing Authority, they won't make a good property. But you guys know, like I know, we, we don't all think the same way when it comes to development.
Assume the worst, hope for the best.
That, since that's our little spot, we, I want to make sure that we get something over there that will serve their purpose, but will also match what we have over there.
And one of the things that they will be asking us to do that is separate and apart from this property that they're going to purchase or that we're going to give to them is um, a, a setback variance because we're going to be in violation of the required setbacks with the city because we're going to have basically zero setbacks.
Right.
Apparently that's not going to be an issue for approval, but it is something that we'll have to move forward. And as owners of the property, we are actually the applicants on all of these zoning issues.
Okay.
So there, if nothing else, then I'd like to make a motion to table this item until staff gets back and Stephanie gets back with us when, about when we're ready to move.
Are you all sufficiently empowered from what we talked about tonight then to keep going until you're ready to come back?
Yes, and, and I, I think this would be something that, I mean, they would hope that you would be able to actually vote on March sixth after the presentation and questions and that if there were any tweaks that needed to be made at that time, that um, you could direct me to, to do that.
All right, do I have a motion to table?
We got a motion, all right. I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five-zero, motion is tabled.
Thank you, guys.
New business, item number one. Consider approval of inmate detail contracts in the following agencies for twenty-twenty-three. City of Griffin, Griffin-Spalding Board of Education, Fayette County, Henry County, City of Thomaston, Upson County. This one?
Warden Humphrey.
Good evening. Um, basically the last time we updated these contracts was in two thousand seventeen. So this was an attempt to update them. I also wanted to increase the ten percent administrative fee that we charge to the municipality. So we're increasing that by five percent, up to fifteen percent. With some language things in there that we, we cleaned up. One was making sure that the vehicle that municipality provides for the inmates be transported from the institution uh, to the worksite. We've had some issues with them having all the safety equipment, such as seat belts and doors and turn signals and those kinds of things working. So we added that to the uh, contract as well. We had um, a couple of the contracts specifically stated that the municipality would allow, allow for five extra days over the fifteen days for the officer to receive their training, their mandated training. So we added that into all of the, the contracts. And there were, the Upson County detail, they dropped one of their details from two to one. We've made that change. And um, the Fayette County detail increased their uh, numbers of details by one. So uh, this includes all those changes will be, will have all the contracts on the same annual cycle. And uh, all the wording in each one of those contracts will be the same as well.
Ms. Winder?
I have reviewed these contracts and Warden Humphrey, of course, is on the ball, wants to get this done way before it, the time so we can get these to all of the other governments to, to approve um, before June thirty.
We like that management style.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so over this past year, you know, we, um, I think we did some things in terms of pay increase or some other things. I don't know if there's, if law enforcement got something different, but is all of this reflective in the pay that they're going to be responsible for, for paying for these, these officers?
Yes, that's correct. Even the different salaries for the officer is calculated. And they ask if someone's been there ten years and their salary's more than someone that's been there for a year, then that's, it's based on that individual that is carrying that, that detail.
With the number, if you can, and right off the top of your head, and I'm pretty sure you can, how many inmates do we have out on details, including our own details every day, that, that actually leave the?
About two hundred and thirty to two hundred and forty.
Out of, out of a total, how many you have?
We average about three, anywhere from three fifty to three seventy.
So you're kind of empty during the day. That's a good thing.
Yes.
You want them out.
To, to be honest with you, if I had these, if we could hire the staff, I have municipalities calling weekly wanting additional details. Henry County now wants, wants two additional details. Fayette County wants additional details. City of Barnesville wants the details, so.
We need a business plan for that.
Yeah. I mean, really.
He's making money.
It's, it's just, it's. What's holding us back is, is being able to hire staff.
What'd you say was what now?
The higher staff.
Higher staff.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the inmate detail contracts with the following agencies as listed by um, the chair and by Warden Humphrey.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five-zero, thank you. Item number two. Consider request from Warden Humphreys at the Spalding County Correction Institute to implement an inmate firefighter program.
Interesting.
Yes, um, back in November or December, I think I was talking with Dr. Ledbetter and he asked me if there was something that we could do that, or we wanted to do or should do or could do. And um, I basically, there, there's one thing that I think that would be beneficial to the community and that if we start an inmate firefighter program. And this is nothing new. The, the, the original firefighter program started back in nineteen sixty-three at Lee Airendale. Uh, since that time, it's expanded to nineteen state facilities and five county facilities. They cover about fifty-two cities and counties throughout the state. It's been a tremendous success story, particularly with those that inmates have gone through the program, graduated. The training lieutenant at Athens Clark Fire Department, he's actually one of my former inmates uh, many, many years ago. So there's a lot of, lot of success stories with this. And the, the thing I want to do is, is first I say, well, how's this, what's the perception of this? And um, many times we, we feel that the communities will be very reluctant to allow inmates to come into their fire, their house as a firefighter or, or respond to someone that's in an accident and help them get them out of a vehicle. My experience over the thirty-five years of doing this is that uh, most of your communities rely on these firefighters. And um, they're, they're very well-trained, they're very well-disciplined. And uh, quite frankly, if your house is on fire, we probably don't think about
Who's calling the water?
what fire station they come out of. Their, their, the success stories behind it are very, very well. I'm a recipient of it. Back when I was in college, I was at home, left. A few minutes later, see the fire truck come by, and we had an inmate firefighter team in that county. They responded to it in just a matter of minutes. They put it out. Now, I was not concerned that they went in there, and I had gun cabinets full of guns and all those kinds of things. They understand where they're at, and they understand that eyes are watching us and those kinds of things. But it is a very, very successful program. It has been for a number of years in a number of locations. We have already identified seven firefighters that we've, we've gone through the criteria, identified these, so there's folks who'll be there for a little while. They need to be so that they can successfully complete the training. And I think there will be a very, very good start for us to start with. There is one thing we need, and that's the reason I'm here, is we do need a position that will kind of be like their fire chief, that will be responsible for their training, supervise them. This person will have dual roles. He'll also be a peace-certified officer. They will have to have the firefighter training as well, so they'll provide both of those functions, as supervising them and being able to carry them out and respond to fires after hours or whenever they're needed.
Okay. Have you already got that person picked out?
No.
Chief Byrd, please step forward. The other half of this team.
I, I watched the video. Very impressive. And there's a TV show out right now with the same, a guy who was in prison. And I'm just like, oh, man.
Yep. That changed a whole bunch of peoples around my district. When they started watching that Fire Country thing, they said, you know, I was against this till I watched that show and how well they're supervised and everything else. So, all right, Chief Byrd, concept, idea, thoughts?
Well, I'll tell you that prior to coming to Spalding County, I was deputy chief of the George Fire Academy. We had an inmate detail, and we responded into Monroe County, and their citizens were very welcoming of our inmate firefighters. And what you'll typically find, too, is this, the group view this as a second chance in life, and they will even self-police each other. So that they, they run a very tight ship. And the key, then, this is all the warden, this was his idea, and it's a great program. He's gonna be, we will get seven additional firefighters that, you know, don't take sick leave, they don't take vacation days, they're there 24 on, 24 on, 24 on. So it's a great program, but if you look at throughout Georgia, the programs that have been successful, the one key thing he's adding is they have a dedicated correction officer with them because firefighters don't make good prison correction officers.
So, so, so do they get to go and do firefighter stuff every day?
What, what we would do.
Like going washing trucks and all the other stuff that y'all?
So not yet, not just responding to fires.
No. How we're gonna work this, and we're still working through some ideas and concepts, is they would respond on structure fires in any, like we had a Big Woods fire less than an hour ago, they would have come help. So specific calls during the day, they would come out to train, and we would help them train. They would train with our people so they could get to know each other. But outside of that, unless there's special details going on at the station that require a lot of resources, they would train and work from their facility.
So, so will they get BLS?
We will train them to firefighter one, which includes emergency medical responder.
And if, if the person, the candidates do this and they stay in the program, what are the chances of them being able to get a job? Will we hire them after they leave from their sentence? So it's not, I mean, we give them all this training, and then they go somewhere and they say, no, you got a felony. We can't hire you.
No, this is a great job interview process because we'll have them for an extended period of time. In state of Georgia law, to become certified in the state of Georgia as a firefighter, you cannot be convicted of felony in the past 10 years unless you've been in this program and they drop it to five years.
To five years?
Five years, and most of the personnel, and that's conviction date. So most of the personnel that would be in this would be in past five years, so they come out. And as he said, I've known several firefighters throughout the state of Georgia that this was their second lot. And on a personal side, I was also at City of Mar Fire Department. One of the best firefighters I ever hired was in prison on campus of Georgia Public Safety Training Center, looking at the burn bill going, this is what I want to do in my life. And today, he's an officer at the Metro Fire Department. So, yes.
I mean, I think it's a wonderful opportunity, not only for them, but for us. But I just, anytime we have these programs, I always think about, we give them this welding experience or this whatever experience, and then when we put them out, we don't let them work here, and then they go someplace else, and then they, they just have a skill. And so, yeah, that would be so important to make sure that they.
This is probably the best internship anybody could get.
Yeah, I think it's an awesome idea.
And I've already broached it with our department. And the, they work well already with mutual aid with Jackson, the C of Jackson Correction Facility on the highway with their inmate firefighter team. So most of firefighters that have been around are very used to it, and they're very excited. And the younger ones that have not been approached to it, we've talked to them, and they're, they're gonna do it. And there's some things we're gonna do to help, like we're gonna bring the Jackson fire crew over, do some training with our people before this ever starts so they can see the professionalism. And I'm gonna tell you, we went to Jackson prison and county, Jackson County, and looked at their program. You won't talk about pride and ownership, you go look, you go look at their fire stations. So I'm very proud that we would even entertain this, and I'm excited, though, what resources it's gonna provide to our county.
I got one more bad question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are we gonna be able to pay for this out of the fire fund?
The county manager says that fire district tax will pay for this.
What we're doing this year, the warden has already got turnout gear on loan, and we're adding money in our budget next year to order them turnout gear.
That was a big thing. Where is a warden gonna get that money to pay for that? So, so, yeah, I'm all in.
Yeah, let me tell you.
I do wanna mention one thing, too. I think it's.
Step to the mic, please.
Come to the mic.
I, I think it's important that, that we stress this is not to replace anything that we already have. This is totally to supplement what we have. We're not trying to replace employees or any of those kinds of things. It's to supplement the program that's already there.
Good point to make, but yes.
I believe the position you asked for will be funded out of your budget.
That's correct. That's correct.
That would be the only cost outside of the department.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I, I gotta say, as a, as a resident criminal defense attorney, the first question people ask me is, how can you defend those people? And I always have to tell them the same thing. Everybody's one bad night, one mistake in identity, one something away from, one mistake away from being one of those people. We're not talking about people going to sing-sing. You know what I'm saying? This isn't Alcatraz. Like, this is, you know.
Making bad decisions.
People have made a bad decision, they're all effectively trustees, they're going out on work details anyway. You know what I'm saying? Except now we can train them up from being people, you know, with mops and buckets to actually saving people's lives. And so often, when they leave that system, the system just goes, all right, good luck. Hey, we've branded you on the forehead with this F, and you can never get a passport, you can never vote, you can never... Good luck. Don't break the law again. And this provides a different route for.
For a set of business.
Far, far too little of them. I wish we could have more. But this is the kind of stuff that reinvigorates somebody with purpose after they've fallen as flat on your face as you can. So I'm all for this.
Let's make sure that every quarter for the first year or so, you all come back and tell us how we're doing. This is important. This is a big program that we're trying to help our citizens or citizens around here, and I'd like to make sure that we continue to highlight that. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys, so much. Thank you.
Item number three. Consider request from the I-95 Central Corridor Coalition Incorporated in the support of a GDOT initiative to submit an application for the I-75 corridor to be selected as part of the Federal Railroad Administration Corridor Identification and Development CID program. Ms. Wyndham?
Mr. Chairman, everyone has seen the I-75 Central Corridor Coalition letter regarding the expansion of rail, and they're just asking that all of you show your support for this.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, report of the commissioners. Commissioner Johnson?
Oh, two things. Great audit. I have to say that I'm rather shocked, but I'm very happy. You know, so I'm very, I don't know, kudos to Steve and staff and everyone for this. So I'm glad to see that we're trending upwards. Always great. And as far as the presented presentation on the inmate firefighter program, I think it's excellent. I think there's a lot of potential. But before the implementation process comes in place, due to perception, I think that there needs to be a process put out. Because, you know, our community may be different than all the other communities, and all that's been viewed. We know that, so. And I'm sure you guys will do that. A thumbs up. That's it.
All right. Rachel Bolden?
The only thing I got tonight is I sent y'all an email, everybody emailed today about the land bank. There's just some concerns there, and I'd just like to get an update here, pretty quick on it. Just kinda, because I kinda got an answer about it earlier, but I just wanna update in writing.
In writing?
Yeah, I mean, in writing, you know, I had to deny it.
Okay.
Okay.
I have had a couple of things. Kathy, you gave, thank you for giving us this little sheet. And I know that Steve is probably listening, but I noticed that on this sheet for these commissioner trainings, there are several civic engagement items on here. Bringing people together, getting your message out. I think this is very important stuff, and that, he's not here. DeAndre should be.
I've given it to DeAndre to review.
He should definitely be attending some of these because he will be networking with people who are doing the same thing that he's doing. Not that he's not doing a great job, but I'm just saying, you know, other, the same thing that we do.
Everyone can always do better, yeah.
Yeah, that he will be considered for some of those. And I just, just wanna thank the community again for just being who we are. You know, we're, we're, I tell people, we're the big country over here, but, you know, these people in Griffin and Spalding County have showed out. They have really come together and acted like folk, you know. And I just, I'm very proud to say that I'm from here and that, that we have looked out for our own folks. That's all I have. There's DeAndre.
I'm already working on it, just letting you know.
Oh, okay.
Okay. My calendar says that we have a zoning meeting that Thursday night. Are we planning on doing that via Zoom, or are we gonna cancel that one?
We usually cancel.
Looking at it to do it.
You could not do it via Zoom.
Right. I mean, it's a zoning meeting, so.
Sure.
Maybe, maybe next meeting, we put it on the agenda to actually reschedule or cancel that one?
Okay, she's thinking that far ahead.
Well done.
Because we will have Tommy teach you over with.
Girl, stop saying stuff like that.
That's supposed to be in March.
The, yeah, 73 million in, CC 3 million out. That's, that's really great. But just as they were saying tonight, we were really prepared for that last recession, and it got very close to us not making ends meet, but we got out of it. We need to prepare now for the coming recession because it's a cycle, guys. And you can tell that the downturn is coming, and when it gets bad, it's gonna get really bad. And with the folks we have at the helm, Ms. Garrison, Dr. Ledbetter, like, it's, and all of our department heads are just, everybody's working together so amazingly well. Everyone's running their departments so great. And I just, we're just lucky to be where we're at, but we need to take at full advantage of that and prepare now for, you know, if the housing market goes down, like, that means the tax revenue goes down. That means, you know, so.
The housing market is definitely down.
Yeah, and a lot of folks, and a lot of folks are saying it's gonna continue to go and go and go. So looking at the manufacturing orders, looking at all kinds of factors that are long-term signals, all of them are saying the same thing, that we need to, that the seven years of planning are over, and that we need to put as much as we can in the storehouse.
We don't be having such a robust budget.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be tough. It's gonna be tough. And I do wanna say, get well soon to Steve. We're glad to be getting information from him. I'm glad that he's, on one level, been forced to take some time off. Hopefully, the good Lord won't have to go this far to get him to take some time off in the future, maybe.
He's going far ahead.
The, the last thing I wanna mention, well, I guess there's two more things. Our, we had to, for obvious reasons, cancel the Martin Luther King Parade. Is there a plan to?
You know what?
Celebrate that some other time, you know?
Are we ready for that? I mean, we still got some planning to do, right?
I, I will ask and see, see what is going on. Maybe there's a plan for maybe around May or something, but I know right now.
Okay, well.
We need to do something. We need to do something, and I know it's hard to restart.
Yeah, but I will definitely ask.
But I think the county needs to support that.
Because you look at, you know, we got that Fourth of July, July, that falls right behind that. Back-to-back parades, I don't know if they can do that. Maybe they can, I don't know. But we got, we do have to think about that.
That's a good idea.
But it could be in conjunction with June 8th if you want to.
No, exactly.
There you go.
Exactly.
Good idea, Stephanie. That's why you're an attorney.
You mentioned a parade anyway, so.
Yeah, 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 it's something to celebrate. I, I, I know a lot of people who want to support it, me personally, but also I think the county needs to do whatever we can to support that. And the last thing is, I, at our next meeting, can we get an update from that firm that we hired to do the building code update? I'd like to know the timeline. I mean, we ask, we've been asking for years and years.
Community.
Yeah.
Municode.
Municode.
Yeah, I want, I want numbers. That's it.
First, congratulations to Ms. Johnson for being the best elected official.
I know it's a joke, don't y'all laugh?
We totally understand.
How much you had to pay for that?
A lot.
A lot of money.
James, are you asking?
And James, your wife, for being selected.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right.
Best account?
Karen Mathiak for being number two, as the best number two for elected official. Great news there. Thank you all for the workshop. I thought it was very helpful. We'll see if we can continue to have those periodically where we sit down and have an opportunity to talk among ourselves. I believe Steve will be back soon, I'm hoping soon. The roller coaster, as most of you know, and Steve, we care about you, we're thinking about you, but you come back when you're ready. Most importantly, don't hurry that backup. And the LVA, Land Bank Authority, I think we're probably gonna have to have a meeting, a workshop on that. And we're probably gonna have to have some time with the city to talk about what their views are on it because this is not just us. We're gonna have to sit down with them and try to work together to be able to work this. But we've gotta sit down and get this thing moving again. It's dead stopped now for a long period of time, and we've gotta rework that some way or the other. All right?
I, I have some responses from the county manager, who's been texting me and responding to everything that you say.
Can they all, Steve? Come on.
Yes, we will have DeAndre attend ACCG.
Me and Kathy already talked about it.
And Tom Machichi will, will not be on the, on the agenda this Friday. It has been moved to March the 6th.
Okay.
And that is so that we could get our notices out appropriately. So March, not May, March the 6th. He wanted to thank you, James, for your kind words. He said, Gwen, that he is not hard-headed.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are, and I made sure I said it loud enough so you could hear it.
And he also thanked Clay for his kind words.
He ain't hard-headed.
Any other comments from you as a county attorney?
Anything from update on archways with any meetings that the city may have had on them? Have they met yet on this?
I believe that it's on their agenda for their retreat.
Oh, retreat, so it's not a regular meeting?
Yes. I talked with Ms. O'Connor this morning about that, after she watched ours. She's going to use some of the stuff that we talked about to take, to talk to her board about it. And for you and I, for sure, on one March, the archway is coming back to sit down and talk with the executive committee about thoughts on where to go and everything else. So that's an important session. All right, Ms. Kathy?
No, I'm good.
All right. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right. We're adjourned.
Going for myself with this dawn comprehensive annual report. Look here.